Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You're welcome to this evening's meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. We will call the meeting to order and begin with a moment of prayer. Let's all pray together, please. Our Father, we thank you for all of your good gifts to us. Thank you that you've been acknowledged in our Declaration of Independence as the Creator. And we ask for this meeting tonight that we will have humility first and understand our, our position and pray that you would just give us all wisdom beyond our experience so that we can do what's best in the long run for each citizen of our county and just give us your wisdom today for Christ's sake. Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, and I would ask Mr. John Connolly to step forward.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Step up here, I would like to hand you the certificate of recognition. And you had a few words you wanted to say about the flag?
I did. Go to the mic, please. As an elected trustee in Brighton Area Schools, a few years back, Governor Snyder mandated that all students have the right and the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance in public schools in the state of Michigan. So taking that and going a little further with it, you guys may have seen one of these in your offices. The poster. So a few years back, I had our artist at our shop draw this up and I took it to our superintendent, at the time was Dr. Gray. And I said, what do you think of this? And what if we put this in every classroom? So he supported that in Brighton Area Schools. And it was a nice move. And I believe it's something we should think about through our entire school system in Livingston County. It'd be nice to have this so the students know what the pledge of allegiance talks about, how to address the flag, talks about if you're in uniform, if you're military, if you're a citizen, and also that it was by mandate from our governor that this would take place for us in Michigan schools.
So that poster now hangs in every classroom in every Brighton school?
Most all classrooms.
Most all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
There's two.
I understand.
Yes, but thank you. It's great.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Yeah, well, thank you for this.
Next item on the agenda is roll call. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Houserman.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Drake.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
And Commissioner Gross is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, the next item on the agenda is correspondence. We have three pieces of correspondence, one each from Ingham County, Ottawa County, and we have two from Ottawa County. Chair will entertain a motion to accept and place on file.
So moved.
Second sample.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, well, that's it. Nine to nothing, eight to nothing. The next item on the agenda is call to the public.
Mr. Chair, I, I may have missed something, but I would ask for an approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve this evening's agenda as presented.
Okay, okay, one moment, please.
Support, Houserman.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? All those in favor of the approving, of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we'll move down to item seven, which is the call to the public. Madam Chair, who do we have?
I have two cards. Mr. Chair, how would you like me to call the names for the cards?
The first name and whether they're a resident of the county would be sufficient.
Okay, we have Colleen from Genoa.
Colleen, we have only three minutes for each person to speak. And because we have such a big crowd out here this evening, I don't want to deprive anybody of that time to do that, so.
I'm confident I'll be under my timeline.
You're, you're a sweetheart. Thank you very much.
Very briefly, I just wanted to comment on Resolution 2023-06-103. I'm going to admit straight up, I'm not an expert on this. But when I see participating in grants and funds, my mind goes back to COVID money. My mind goes back to strings attached. And while I appreciate there are some limits on how we might take it and so forth, I guess my inclination is always not to participate in things because I think there are always strings attached. And I would think that our taxes would be sufficient to support any expenses we have. So that's just kind of my mindset on all this stuff. I don't like to be beholden to anybody, so again, thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa from Hamburg Township.
Good evening. I'd also like to comment about resolutions for consideration of 2023-06-103. And I know I, I spoke on this several months ago, and I really appreciate the fact that the resolution has, has some limits set to it. But when I'm reading about the Fusion Center, it's very scary. And I know that there was language in there about keeping our constitutional rights and our freedoms. But the, the whole point of this is to be collecting data, analyzing and sharing social media, facial recognition, driver's license plates. I mean, that does not protect our animated, I can't say that word. Yeah, that very well. And I just, you know, being a county that we call ourselves a constitutional county, I don't know why we're submitting ourselves to accepting funds from the government. We are taxed here. We pay nice property tax. And I feel like, as Colleen has stated, that we should be able to cover our expenses. And I know this has to do with terrorism. And if we're, if the federal government and the Homeland Security was really concerned about federalism, they'd close the damn border and finish the wall. That's my opinion, but thank you very much for listening.
I do not have any additional cards in the chambers.
Anybody on Zoom?
I have two on Zoom. Lori Cowan.
Ms. Collins?
Yes. Thank you. I'm Lori Cowan from Unadilla Township. And I'm very glad to see that the Homeland Security Grant made it onto the agenda tonight. But I'm really disappointed that you found it necessary to add the sixth whereas. In spite of that, I hope you will pass it unanimously. And I hope you'll actually consider deleting the language. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Judy Davenmeyer.
Hi, I'm Judy Davenmeyer from Genoa Township. And I'm concerned about the resolution on the Homeland Security Grant. You seem to be excluding, accepting any funds for fighting domestic terrorism. And given that Livingston County is home to one of the men who pled guilty in a domestic terrorism plot to kidnap our governor and murder her, I'm concerned that you are, in a way, condoning that sort of behavior. And I'm disappointed that you don't think domestic terrorism is a threat in our county, given that history. And I'm also concerned that, that it took this long to agree to take some of our, our tax dollars back. We pay taxes to the federal government, and we're entitled to have some of that returned to us in the form of grants for, for needed services. And you're, you're cheating your own taxpayers if you refuse to accept money from the federal government, which we have paid in through our federal taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not see any more, Commissioner.
Is there anyone else in the audience that cares to speak and call to the public? Yes, ma'am. Please do.
Here, you might remember who I am. I've been here a few times. I'm here on behalf of the First United Methodist Church of Brighton.
You'll have to give us your name, please.
Oh, Pam Comer-Hartland. On behalf of the First United Methodist Church of Brighton Economic Justice Committee, we are still out here hoping that you will take up your support of the Master Transit Plan for Livingston County and expand, expand it and support it. My understanding is that back in the day, probably around 2018 or 2019, it would have cost the taxpayer about $25 a year in taxes to implement the transportation plan. And it wasn't even considered. So, I mean, that figure is probably different now, but looking forward, I hope you will consider supporting that plan and with money, possibly taxes. There, I talked to someone recently who said, I didn't move to Livingston County for the low taxes. I would like to see more services. And so there are a bunch of us out here, and we would like to see you just continue. And continue your support, but also expand your support for that plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? With that, we will close call to the public. And Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting dated June 12th and the closed session of that meeting on June 12th as well.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 12th, 2023, and closed session minutes of June 12th, 2023.
Support, Houserman.
Been moved and supported. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Tabled items from the previous meetings is item nine. We have none. Item 10 is reports. Are there any members of the board that care to make a report this evening?
I would just like to mention, House, report. We, Wes and I went to the Michigan Works Consortium Board Meeting. Was it Tuesday? And there, there's quite a, seems to be a turnover there. Several of their long-term employees are getting retirement age. And so I think it's in good hands, but there'll be some changes there. Just things are, Shamar is a very good leader there. And we're, and I think that our Livingston County Works is doing well too, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? I have a brief report. It's a little overdue. We were expecting a gentleman here this evening, Pete Cuzz. Presented with this. Pete lives out in the western part of this county. And he, he, he provided us with a bunch of military vehicles for the Memorial Day Parade. And as I see it up and down the aisle here, some of us who were in that parade were marching with those vehicles. There were nine, five of them. Were there, do you recall?
Yes, sir, there was five.
And they were genuine and they were real. And, and two of our people were marching behind, in, in the crowd of vehicles. These are real, couple of really big things. And one of them was a tow truck. Never saw a military tow truck before. And there was a command vehicle. And anyhow, two of our guys, and Roger was one of them, and the other fellow's not here this evening, but Dale Brewer carried the flag between two of the vehicles as we marched in this line of march. And in the background was our, our own disc jockey. And you might remember the young lady was your wife. She was playing the music in a huge piece of equipment. And, and they were all John Philip Sousa stuff. So we had our own band and our own disc jockey and our own flags. And as we marched along the, the route of marcher, people from the audience, and you could tell the ones that were veterans because of their garb, they would salute the flag. None of them took the knee, not one. So I guess that's, that, I mean, it's not like the basketball players who make millions of dollars a year. Hockey players don't take the knee. And I, and I vote for hockey players every day of the week, wouldn't we, Frank?
Sure would.
You bet. Okay. So when Pete gets a little bit better, he'll be here to receive this award. With that, I, I will turn the meeting over to Commissioner Drake to continue with the resolutions on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet.
We're at Agenda Item Number 11, top of page two, entitled Resolutions for Consideration, 11 Sub A. It's going to require a roll call vote. It's from the Board of Commissioners. It's a resolution to accept the 2022 Livingston County Financial Audit. At the table, first, we need a motion.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner Fiani, support by Commissioner Domas.
You have the floor. Thank you, Commissioner Drake and, and committee fellow commissioners. I just wanted to introduce our speaker tonight. The audit requires a lot of time and effort. State law requires that it wrap up by June 30th. So this is a resolution that is always going to be on the agenda, the, the second full board meeting of June. And so we're thankful that we were able to meet that deadline today. I want to thank the treasurer and her team, Fiscal Services, their entire team for all the information that's gathered for this. And here tonight to present the audit of the financial statements is Bill Bricki. Bill is from Plant Moran. The county utilizes Plant Moran for these independent audit services. Bill does a great job with this. We have frequent check-ins throughout the process, and he'll be giving a presentation tonight and answering questions you may have about the audit.
Okay, thank, thank you and good evening. So as mentioned, I am here to talk about the audit for the year ended December 31, 2022. We do have a presentation we'll go through in just a minute, but I have some other documents I just want, I just want to highlight here. So as part of the audit process, the deliverables that you would have received are, you have the financial statements themselves. We have two separate letters that we issue. One, we refer to as the end of audit letter, which really more or less is a letter related to the audit, audit process. And then we have our report on internal controls over financial reporting. And then we also will be issuing a separate audit on, on your compliance with federal grants that isn't completed yet, but is expected to be completed within the next week or so. And that deadline is September 30th, so that is not due June 30th like the regular statements. Before we get started, I want to take just a moment and really thank, you know, all of your team for, for their efforts throughout the audit. You know, Jennifer, Nathan, Cindy, Hillary, and your entire team. We, we do start the audit in March and finish in June, so it is quite a heavy lift on your team to help us complete it in an efficient manner. So we appreciate all their assistance. So we have covered all of these documents in detail with management. My goal tonight really is to highlight some of the, some of the key items related to the audit itself. The first item I want to start with, which is our opinion on your financial statements. It's page one through three in the financial statement document. So the county did receive an unmodified audit opinion again in the current year, which essentially means the financial statements are in compliance with all the rules and regulations. It's the best report you can get, so happy to report that you did receive that. Just also want to highlight that our opinion discusses the fact that although the, the road commission is included in your financial statements, Plant Moran did not audit the road commission. That was audited by a separate firm that gave an opinion on their, on their financial statements. Next, just want to reference the two letters I talked about, the end of audit letter and then the report on internal controls. Very happy to report that if we, that we'd have no audit issues or findings to discuss with you tonight. If we had any matters that needed to be formally documented, they'd be included in those two letters. But since we didn't have any of those letters, they're more or less just general information about the audit process, and again, really nothing to highlight there. We did, we do have one matter that, that I want to discuss tonight related to some reports that will need to be filed with the state of Michigan. So the county does have a deficit in three smaller funds. So in the, in the ARPA fund, the Veterans Grant Fund, and the Indigent Defense Fund, there are deficits and unassigned fund balance in there. And that's primarily due to some accounting nuances related to the way prepaid, prepaid assets are reported. So those are classified in fund balance and non-spendable fund balance. And that is causing the unassigned fund balance to be negative. So the, the county will have to file deficit elimination plans with the state. They'll be very simple plans. It'll be very easy to explain why you have the deficits. But again, that will need to take place as, as a formal document filed with the state. So I don't consider these like significant issues. But again, it's sort of an, an accounting nuance that caused the deficit in the current year in those funds. Yes, sir. So tho, those funds, so actually those are in different, different spots in the financial statements. You would see the ARPA fund on, on page 17. I'm sorry, page 15. And then you'd see the other funds way back in the statements on page, I believe it's 91 and 92. So again, you'll just see small deficits in those funds. The other thing I want to, want to highlight that there was one new accounting standard that was implemented in the current year by the county. It's, it's called GASB number 87. It relates to the way you account for operating leases. So the county was able, had to analyze, you know, over 75 lease agreements that you have where either you're the lessy or the lessor and determine if they, if they fall under this standard. And in fact, many of them did. So you will see a new disclosure in your financial statements this year that's different than we've had in the past. So, so note 14 in the statements themselves to discuss what leases the county has and what the future either revenue streams or payments are going to be. You know, depending on if you're the lessy or the lessor. So not, not a huge change in the overall way you, you know, collect the cash or pay the bills, but more or less just the way you do the accounting for it now because we're looking at it more over the life of the lease as opposed to just the annual, the annual payment there. Now, I'd like to move on to the, the presentation and really just highlight some of the results of the current year. So the first, the first slide we have here is just a four-year history of the revenue of the general fund in the county. And on balance, you'll see the revenue's been, been relatively stable over the last few years. So in the current year, the revenue for the general fund was just over $52 million, which is about a $364,000 increase over last year. So just a slight increase in total. As we look at the categories of revenue, if we look at the, the largest bar there, which is property taxes, you'll see that property tax revenue increased about $1.6 million in 2022 compared to 21. And that was really driven by increases in taxable value throughout the county as your milage rate did not change. So it's not like you levied more taxes. It's just the taxable value did increase. We did see some slight declines in, in charges for services just related to overall, you know, the various county services that are provided. You'll see they're more in line with where they would have been in 2019, 2020. They were up slightly in 21. And then the other category there you'll see is down around $700,000. And that's primarily due to some investment losses that the county had in the current year. So, you know, you do hold a variety of investments, many of which are bonds and government securities and things like that. And the rise in interest rates has kind of devalued those investments. And so you've recorded, you know, you record those investments at market. So you saw about a $700,000 decline there. But it's also important to note, it's kind of like a paper loss because you're going to hold these investments to maturity and you're going to get all of the money that you invested back. But the accounting rules are you, you account for stuff, these investments on fair market value. And so you've seen some declines there which caused that, that, that decrease there in, in revenue. But again, overall, slight increase in revenue and property taxes continue to, you know, increase year over year based on the, the increase in taxable value. So if we look at the next slide, we just see that the same revenue category is really just broken down by a percentage. So as you can imagine, you know, property taxes is your largest source of revenue, accounting for 66% of the total revenue in the general fund, you know, followed by, you know, federal and state funding, which is 13%, and then charges for services, which is 12, and then other, which is nine. And again, this breakdown is very consistent with where you've been in the past and very consistent with what we see at other governmental units where typically, you know, property taxes and, and federal and state funding typically represent 70 to 80% of a general fund revenue stream. So if we switch gears and look at the expenditure side of the equation, so again, this is a four-year history of the general fund expenditures. And, and overall, you'll see, you know, the overall cost structure of the county remains, you know, pretty stable. Your total expenses in the current year were $47.4 million, which is down about $2.2 million from where you were in 2021. You know, as we look at the various components, you know, of the expenditures, you'll see the largest decrease was in general government. So general government decreased from $10.2 million in '21 to $6.2 million in '22. So it's a $4 million decrease. And the primary reason for that decline was in 2021, you made $5 million of extra contributions to your MERS pension system. And in 2022, you made $1 million of extra contributions to the MERS pension plan. So really, it's, it's the, it's the decline in that additional contributions that were made to the pension system that, that decreased there. And then you'll see the other category that changed just a little bit would have been the transfers to other funds. And this is where the county's moving money from the general fund to support other programs throughout the county. And there was an increase there of about $952,000. And that was primarily related to additional funds given to the Indigent Defense Fund. And really, that had to do with more or less the timing of when those transfers were made. There were some changes made in the current year where the, the state's on a September year end, the county's on a December year end. And so you made some additional contributions so that your grant funding year is more in line with, with, with the state reporting cycle there. But again, on balance, as we look at the, the primary, you know, public safety, economic development, health and welfare, very, very stable with where you've been in the past. The next slide, again, we're just going to look at the same expenditures that's broken out by a percentage. And you can see the largest expenditure, you know, in the general fund is public safety. So the county continues to be committed to public safety and 64% of your general fund budget goes to supporting, you know, those programs. So last year, it would have looked a little bit different just because you did have the additional $4 million of contributions in general government. So that would have made general government bigger and public safety a little smaller. But historically, you've been, you know, around the 65% rate in public safety, you know, for your general fund expenses. So on the next slide, we're going to take a look at legacy costs. So legacy costs obviously are, are a very hot topic throughout the state. And I know you've committed substantial resources to, to really fund your pension and retiree healthcare system. And you'll see in the current year, the pension, so the way this works is the, the orange bar, that's the money you have. And the blue bar, that's the estimated liability based on actuarial calculations of what they think the total cost of these promises are. And so you'll see, you know, the pension system with the additional contributions that were made, you're, you're 86% funded in the current year compared to 79% last year. I will, I will let you know, though, the, the pension system, these numbers are based on December 31, '21. So in '22, there could be some declines here because the market was, was doing a little worse in, in '22 compared to '21. When we look at the retiree healthcare there, you'll see the total, the funding percentage is 111%. So you're over 100, over 100% funded in your, in your OPEB obligation there, which is very unique. Most governments are oftentimes 0% funded or under 10% funded. So being over 100% funded in retiree healthcare really is a great accomplishment for the county. And this is reported as of December 31st, '22. And so last year, the OPEB would have been 127% funded. But as mentioned, there were some investment losses in, in '22 that really, you know, reduced the percentage. But hopefully that recovers with, as the market recovers going forward. The next slide, just want to take a brief look. So as I mentioned, you know, the county has been, you know, really committed to, you know, getting the pension system funded and being over 80% is a, a great spot to be. And so this is just a list over the last 10 years of extra contributions that the county's voluntarily made into the pension system. So the, the way it works is the actuary counts an actuarial determined contribution. And you're required by the state constitution to make that actuarial determined contribution. But the county has made But the county has made contributions in excess of that to the tune of, you know, one-million dollars in the current year, five-million last year. And in the last, last ten years, you've made over twenty-seven-million dollars of additional contributions to that pension system to really get it to the funding position that, that it's, that it's in today. So, that's all the, all the information we, we've had, you know, we had provided. You know, as mentioned, you know, the audit was, was clean. We had no audit findings. And I think the county continues to be, you know, in, in, in sound financial condition. And you continue to address these legacy costs, which is really, you know, paying off as we see these funding percentages continue to go up. So, with that, I will take any questions that you may have related to these documents?
Yes, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I also noted in your remarks, you didn't touch on it in your briefing, but you also found that there were, as far as internal controls, you didn't run across any deficiencies in internal controls either?
That's correct. So, if we would identify, obviously, we are, one of the big things we do as part of the audit is look at the internal controls and see, are there any, you know, opportunities for, you know, things to go wrong? And if we identify anything, we do report them to you in that separately issued letter. But, but again, I think that the county is, you know, really invested in, in the internal controls. You have strong systems in place, good segregation of duties. And so, we don't have any issues to report to.
Yes, Commissioner. Question, in other counties, what are practices that are problems that you think we should specifically try to avoid?
Uh, you know, I don't think that there's, you know, anything that comes to mind that's, that's a systemic problem in, in various counties. I think, you know, government, you know, in general, obviously, re, you know, making sure you have the resources necessary to perform all of your services is the biggest challenge. You know, just because your revenue, you know, you're kind of limited on, on your revenue growth. So, we saw in the current year, your, your revenue went up three-hundred-thousand. Your, your tax base went up about four percent. And obviously, with inflation being much greater than that, I think the challenge in most governments is really just figuring out, how do we continue to provide this, the quality service we, we want where costs are going up greater than our revenue? I think that's the largest challenge.
Commissioner, Nakagiri.
Thank you. On page thirty, you talked about blended component units. And in there, there was a, it says the County Building Authority is governed by a five-member board appointed by the county's governing body, et cetera, et cetera. That County Building Authority was dissolved back in twenty-nineteen. Is this boilerplate that got missed or?
I, I would say yes. So, you know, a blended component unit essentially means it's, it's just part of the government. It's not a separate thing. So, we wouldn't do anything, you know, separate than that. And so, oftentimes with the building authority, the transactions would just run through the general fund. So, there wouldn't be any something specific in there. But if that is dissolved, we can certainly remove it.
Yeah, it was dissolved in, under Resolution twenty-nineteen dash ten dash one fifty-six.
Okay.
There was another, something else that caught my eye in terms of, you know, potential risk for bank failures. On page forty-one, talked about, at the end, the county had a hundred-and-four-million of bank deposits, of which one-point-seven-five-million is covered by FD, FDIC, leaving a hundred-and-two-million uninsured and uncollateralized. Comment on that?
Sure. So, it's, it's absolutely a ju- so, with, with the, with the limits of FDIC insurance being two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and just the pure amount of cash and investments the county has, it's very difficult to, you know, you know, have all of your investments insured. I think every government struggles with that. And what we always recommend is, is just making sure that you're doing the due diligence on the, on the banks that you are investing in and continually monitor their strength. Because i- it's absolutely a risk everywhere. But obviously, just given the, the sheer number of banks in Michigan, so there are limits, you know, where you're allowed to put your money. And with the limits being so low, it's just something that you, you're never going to get fully insured, you know, given the, you know, over a hundred-million dollars that you have. So, we just recommend that you really do your due diligence on the banks that you do business with to make sure that they are in good financial health.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I guess we have no other questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You're in discussion. Comment, observation, or objection that any commissioner wishes to voice now that we're in discussion after their presentation? No, I was going to ask for a vote. Go ahead. Yes, it is a roll call. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross is absent. Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is a Resolution eleven-sub-B. It's numbered two-oh-two-three-dash-oh-six-dash-one-oh-three. It's a resolution authorizing Livingston County to participate in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two Homeland Security Grant and to submit fiscal year two thousand twenty-two HSGP agreements. It's brought to us by Emergency Management. May I have a motion?
So, move, Helserman.
Thank you. A second.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Helserman, support by Domas. Teresa Cromartie, are you hearing? And would you like to comment?
Good evening, Commissioners. There's really not much more to add other than what I spoke about at our, during the committee meeting. So, if there's any additional questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners? I have a bit of secretarial scrivener duty. There ought to be a co- a semicolon in the page twenty-five. First, be it resolved after the word gathering. So, it's a, obviously, a break in thought. Right before the number twenty-five-thousand, it's in gray on my copy. Might be a yellow in yours.
Good catch.
Do you see it?
I see. And, and what are you, what are you proposing?
That we put in a semicolon.
Okay.
Did you miss that, Teresa? I don't understand. Thank you for your perseverance.
Thank you for your patience with me as well. I appreciate your openness to listening to what I had to say.
Madam Clerk, did you find it? Did you find the area?
If, after the word ga- gathering, before the twenty-five-thousand.
Correct. I think as a secretarial punctuation that's.
It can be added, correct.
Kindly without a vote.
Yes.
That being established, then, I'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor of Resolution ending one-oh-three, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Eight to zero, it's unanimous. Thank you. We're on to eleven-dash-C, which is numbered two-oh-two-three-dash-oh-six-dash-one-zero-four. It's a resolution authorizing a multi-department contract for uniform cleaning services with To Your Door Cleaning LLC. It's brought to us by Fiscal Services. Krista Belcher is the proponent. May I have a motion?
So, move, Helserman.
Thank you. Moved by Helserman, support by Commissioner Deaton. Would anybody like any further question, comment of Krista? Commissioner Helserman, you have the floor. Excuse me. I was looking right at my good friend that also reminds me of a particular character.
I feel insulted. I'm not really.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
So, my apologies. Yeah, I wanted to let you know, I, I spoke with Krista Belcher before the meeting. She had, and actually, she emailed us out, the percent increase on the contract was twenty-two percent, which I thought, well, that's kind of high. But she informed me, and I wanted, thought this was merited sharing with the whole board, that the twenty-two percent increase was from the last time it was, the contract was negotiated back in twenty-eighteen. So, that was five years ago. So, when I thought, oh, man, twenty-two percent is, that's a lot of money, you know, but it's actually over five years. So, I, I thought, thought we got a pretty good deal there. So, anyway, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment, question, objection, observation?
Seeing none, we'll proceed to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
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 Eight to zero passes unanimously. We're on to Resolution eleven-sub-D. It's numbered two-oh-two-three-dash-oh-six-dash-one-oh-five. It's a resolution authorizing the submission, submission of fiscal year two thousand twenty-four through fiscal year two thousand twenty-eight Cooperative Reimbursement Grant Application Agreement and Other Supporting Documents to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, brought to us by friend of the court. May I have a motion?
Motion, Smith. For Helserman.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Helserman, the close brother of Commissioner Nakagiri in looks. Melissa, would you like to comment? Come forward, have a seat. When you're comfortable, begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Just briefly, the front of the court office is statutorily mandated to do certain duties in the areas of custody, parenting time, and child support. This grant application will help offset the county's costs of running the front of the court office. So, in essence, you won't have to pay for the running of our office completely by yourself. This grant application provides reimbursement for child support eligible expenses. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Seeing no questions, any comment or observation?
Seeing none, the discussion is closed. All those kindly say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Eight to zero passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Welcome. We're to eleven-sub-E. It's numbered two-oh-two-three-dash-oh-six-dash-one-oh-six. It's a resolution authorizing the creation of a full-time public defender, Roman numeral one, public defender, Roman numeral two, public defender, Roman numeral two, public defender, Roman numeral three, and an administrative specialist position in the Livingston County Public Defender's Office, brought to us by Public Defender. May I have a motion?
Move it, please.
Support, Smith.
Thank you, thank you. It was moved by Commissioner Domas, support by Commissioner Smith. Ms. Grown, how? You may proceed if you wish.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. As you are aware, back in March, I believe it was March twenty-seventh of this year, I brought my grant proposal forward. And at that point in time, we discussed at length adding these positions into my office. I did propose that grant and submit that to the state. That did come back approximately two weeks ago, fully funded. And therefore, I am asking that you allow me to have these positions in the office. There is one other position. It's in a different track right now. It's a paralegal position. So, that will be coming to you at a later date once it goes through the Personnel Committee.
Thank you. Questions, observations, comment? How long is the lag before the money arrives?
I, I have to say that I don't know the answer to that. I believe, and I think Cindy would be much better at this than I am, that it was actually, that was the general fund dollars, and that's the money that we have to contribute. And then, because of the fact that the state grant begins in September and we have to supply the money prior to the state doing it, but we deposited the money in twenty-twenty-one for the two thousand twenty-two fiscal year. And that's why I believe that that was the deficit. But I'm sure that Cindy can explain that way better than I can.
That's correct. Did well.
Why, thank you.
How, when do the, when do the people get hired?
Well, I would say that we're going to have to wait to have them in until probably November first as I have to have the office set up, purchase the furniture, things of that nature. And we can't do that until we have the funds, which would be October first. And I can't receive anything prior to that date. So, I would believe that the, the positions would be funded come November. I don't anticipate funding all, or excuse me, hiring all the positions immediately. It is only to make sure that we have enough positions to cover the incoming cases at this point in time.
Good. Have my questions or comments, stimulated anything from the other Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll close the discussion. Voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Eight to zero, unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. We're to Resolution numbered eleven-F. It is number two-oh-two-three-dash-oh-six-dash-one-oh-seven. It's going to require a roll call vote. It's a resolution authorizing an increase in hours for the data analyst position from part-time to full-time. It's brought to us by the Livingston County Sheriff Department. Under Sheriff Plus.
So, move, Sample, second.
Thank you, thank you. It's been moved by Sample, seconded by Fiani.
You have the floor.
Good evening, Commissioners. This resolution, as discussed by Sheriff Murphy and Committee, will provide us some operational stability within our department and allow us to provide better service to the citizens and also give us some backup. So, we will be moving this position, which is currently a point-seven-oh to a one-point-oh, and then eliminating a halftime position resulting in a savings of about sixty-one-hundred dollars a year.
Thank you. Questions, comment, observations? Close the discussion. It's a roll call vote. Kindly, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to Resolution.
Thank you.
Number, you're welcome. Eleven-dash-G. It's number two-oh-two-three-dash-oh-six-dash-one-oh-eight. It's a resolution authorizing the submission of the Cooperative Reimbursement Grant Application for fiscal years two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-eight to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. It's brought to us by the Prosecutor's Office and Family Support. May I have a motion?
Support or move, Helserman.
Thank you. It's been moved by Helserman, supported by Commissioner Deaton. Assistant Prosecutor, you may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. It's good to see a number of people I haven't seen in a while. My understanding is this particular resolution was presented by Prosecutor David Reader at the Subcommittee. I've been advised there were very few questions as it relates to this particular resolution. So, we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. I'll close the discussion. Any comments? All those in favor, voice vote, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Eight to zero, unanimous. The next one up is eleven-sub-H. It's numbered two-oh-two-three-dash-oh-six-dash-one-zero-nine. It's a resolution authorizing a crime victim rights grant for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. It's brought to us by the Prosecutor's Office. May I have a motion?
Move it, please.
Thank you.
Second, Sample.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Domas, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Assistant Prosecutor Henry, you have the table again.
Thank you. Again, we appreciate the Commissioners' hearing, the consideration of this particular resolution. This resolution, again, is an important resolution to our office. It provides the funding to our, the victims of crimes. So, we certainly appreciate the time and consideration from the Commissioners tonight as it relates to this particular resolution. So we certainly appreciate the time and consideration from the Commissioners tonight as it relates to this particular resolution.
Questions, comments, observations? Seeing none, the discussion's closed. All those voice vote kindly say aye.
Aye.
Eight to zero. It's unanimous.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
We're to Resolution 11 sub I. It's a resolution numbered 2023-06-110. It's a resolution authorizing juvenile court to apply for the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Child and Parent Legal Representation Grant for Fiscal Year 2024. May I have a motion?
So move Helsner. Support Deaton.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Helsner, support by Commissioner Deaton. Ms. Shaw, Debbie.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Perfect. You, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a grant, pass-through money from the federal government through the Department of Health and Human Services to reimburse courts and counties for a portion of the cost of providing legal representation to children and parents in neglect and abuse cases. We've had this grant its entirety of five years and it ends up reimbursing us 25% of the costs of eligible expenses.
Thank you. Any questions? Observations or comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. It's a voice vote. Kindly say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Eight to zero. It's unanimous. Passes. Next up is sub J and it's number 2023-06-111. It's a resolution authorizing the juvenile court to apply for the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Raise the Age Grant. May I have a motion?
So move Sample.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Or.
Support by Commissioner Domas. Moved by Sample. Ms. Shaw, you're up again if you wish.
Thank you. This is also a reimbursement grant. If you recall from when I was there last week, I talked about raise the age, the age of juvenile justice intervention increased from 17 to 18 two years ago. And at that time, the legislature passed some funding to make counties whole for the cost of treating kids in the juvenile justice system as opposed to the adult criminal justice system. So this again is a reimbursement grant and it covers all the expenses of treating those 17-year-olds that are not eligible for funding through the Child Care Fund.
Commissioners, any questions, comment, analysis, observation? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. All those kindly say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Eight to zero passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up is 11 K. It's number 2023-06-1122. It's going to require a roll call vote. It's a resolution reclassifying one full-time quality improvement specialist from FLSA exempt to non-exempt. It's brought to us by Central Dispatch. May I have a motion to proceed?
Move Helsner. Support.
Motion by Helsner and support by Smith to proceed on this. At the table is Keisha Williams, our Director. You may have the floor.
As previously stated, I came before the Board last year for a quality improvement specialist position. This is a second position as I now have the staffing in which to put someone in the position, but it's much more appealing if it is hourly as opposed to salary. And it also helps when we are short on the floor in dispatch.
Thank you. Questions, comment, analysis?
Good idea.
That portion is out closed. We'll go to voice vote. All those in, no, excuse me, it's roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Stay there. This is Resolution 11 J. J, no, J 11 L. It's 2023-06-113. It's a resolution authorizing 911 Central Dispatch to explore the possibility of providing contract dispatch services for the city of Ann Arbor, Michigan. It's brought to us by Central Dispatch. Can I get a motion?
Motion Deaton.
Thank you.
Second Sample.
Moved by Commissioner Deaton, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Ms. Williams, the floor is yours.
Yes, the city of Ann Arbor approached 911 Central Dispatch last year around October to discuss the possibility of contracting dispatch services. They currently are dispatched by Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office for Police Services and Huron Valley Ambulance Company for fire service. We currently do not have the staffing for this, as I've already mentioned. However, we're working towards that. And in the meantime, we will actually be studying the actual feasibility of doing this, which includes whatever cost there may be. If there's a cost for the study, which I doubt if there will be any, the city of Ann Arbor has agreed that they would pay that cost. And present with me is the City of Ann Arbor Fire Chief, Mr. Mike Kennedy.
Kennedy, floor is yours if you choose.
Good evening, Commissioners. My Kennedy Fire Chief, City of Ann Arbor, just happy to answer any questions. Appreciate the willingness by Director Williams to entertain this feasibility study. So thank you.
Welcome. I had occasion to think that an amendment might be in order and I've written it. I've given Ms. Williams a copy before I proceed. Do you have any difficulty with it?
There may be, I think I need some clarification and for the chief reference, letter A. Keeping in all information secret and nondisclosable. It depends, I guess, on what you're referring to as this is already an open meeting. We're discussing it and so I'm not sure.
No, the, the content of your potential study might have information that would be inappropriate or not sensible to put out to other jurisdictions. Just so that if we tell some things to the city of Ann Arbor, they understand it's just between us and the city of Ann Arbor. Nobody else gets to hear about it, know about it. Do you understand how that would, that would work?
Yeah, I have a very hard time making a legal agreement outside of our city council or city legal city attorney's office. So I just would, this was a very preliminary study. Any contract would, would come back. The idea would be that we didn't want to waste time by the county if, if there was no interest in this. This is just a very, very preliminary that we're going to be doing with the internal staff from both city police and fire, along with the 911 center. There's not a indication at this time that we're going to hire a outside consulting firm to produce a report. So this would all be staff work done by appointed officials.
And my sense is it's that eventual report. And so you'd have time to run it by your attorney and the resolution is merely by us tonight, not by the city of Ann Arbor. So I think knowing that it's our, it's my intent, if the amendment gets passed, that this would be some type of writing in the future that your attorneys would agree to.
I would say eventually, if it were to get to that point, right now, it's hard for, I believe either one of us to say disclose because we're simply, what we're doing is just simply public. We would be asking Penesila Fiber Network, which is our 911 vendor. How long would it take? Can it take? What's the cost for this? Or, or I, we make contact with Washtenaw County. What's the call volume for Ann Arbor? Please fire that type of information. So it's very basic. Yes, what the findings are, we would report that to the Board of Commissioners as he would report it to his. And then I think at once I report that to you, at that point, it's more, okay, now we come to the table as to how this is going to work, if it's still going to work at all. Because again, all dependent on staffing.
How about if we just take it, sub A out? Would that work?
That would work. Yes, sir.
Thank you. With that discussion, I'll help the rest of the Commissioners with what I'm talking about. Last time at Sam, we were talking, we were having questions and answer. And Ms. Williams was kind enough to say that she thought there'd be two representatives from Livingston County on the feasibility study and that a written report would eventually generate that we would get. And then she also said that Ann Arbor will pay the cost. And so then I would, I wrote in that there'd be a, a writing of some kind from the city of Ann Arbor saying that they would pay the cost. So on the one I just passed out, it would be sub A would be deleted and I've got it for your perfect records. So with that said, any, well, I will make a motion then to amend using the template I've passed out without sub A.
Our standard label because of constitutional for B would be to the extent permitted by law.
Please speak into a microphone. We can't hear you on Zoom.
Thank. Our, the basic provision for the contract because of contractual or constitutional limitations would be to the extent permitted by law to hold harmless indemnify because there are, there are issues regarding public entities indemnifying other entities.
I understand. Thank you for that addition.
Does everyone understand that extralegalese in front of, at the beginning of sub B? That would be my motion to amend the current resolution. Is there a second?
Support.
You. Further discussion, further analysis, objection, critique?
I, I just want to make it clear from the Fire Chief from Ann Arbor that you don't see that as a problem or that Ann Arbor will have to take another step or whatever before. Do you, you see that? Does anybody see that as a problem, this amendment?
Yeah, I want to be careful stating the legal opinion on behalf of the city. That would be well outside of my lane. And on the city perspective, this is at a staff level for us to research it. And this is very much at any point, either Livingston or the city could determine this just isn't like, we haven't even got into the granular level with Director Williams saying, I can't get the staff. There's no way for me to get the staff. And Livingston says, this isn't going to work. Similarly, for the city to say, this isn't going to work for us either. This is just, this is, I cannot stress how preliminary all of this has been. And just for us to kind of have a sit down and get into some of those numbers as Director Williams mentioned, with, with none of us making a commitment other than to discuss the potential is where we're at right now. So.
Hence the word feasibility. Yes.
Got it.
That's just about a dealmaker or I just don't, to me, this is a very good situation that we're getting into. And I just don't want to overburden it with something that's going to sink, you know, put a hole. The best mic.
Thank you. Any other comment, analysis, Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Drake, on the specific language of the now this, is this going to be a therefore be it resolved? Is this going to be a whereas? I mean, would, where would these be inserted?
103. Single therefore be it resolved. After the word study, would these, there'd be a comma and then these words would be inserted.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
And do you picture this as, as a safety thing as opposed to a burden? That's, that's kind of how you're.
I picture it as one side has told us that the other side is going to pay for it, but I'd like the other side to agree they're going to pay for it. That's what's going on.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
A question for the chief. How is, so this covers this, if this agreement comes to fruition, it covers the police and then the ambulance. How is fire dispatched?
That's one of the reasons that we reached out. We have a structural delay in fire dispatch right now. Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office is the PSAP, which is similar to Livingston 2911. They're the primary PSAP where the call comes in, then all fire EMS calls are then transferred to a private company. It goes by Emergent Health Partners. That is the parent company if you're on Valley Ambulance. So with that, we have structural delays of dispatching police and, excuse me, fire and EMS. And the dispatch systems are disparate. They do not talk to each other. So it's a physical transfer of phone. So we have, that's the, the driving forces for their, us to have a unified public safety dispatch for the city.
So, so if this agreement comes to fruition, we would, our 911 would also be dispatching fire calls? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other question, comment, analysis? We'll start with a voice vote on the amendment. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment passes. I'll get this piece of paper to our clerk so she has the exact wording. Next, on the main as amended resolution, it is another voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight to zero, eight to zero. They both pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Drive safely. We're to Resolution 11 M. It's number 2023-06-114. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of boiler systems and components brought to us by Facility Services. May I get a motion?
So move Helsner. Support Nakagiri.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Helsner and support by Commissioner Nakagiri.
Director Chair.
Yes, sir.
There was a proposed amendment from counsel that we would ask that the Board consider to add to the proposal, and I apologize, it came in late, to amend the resolution to require the following statement on proposals. And it was emailed out, but acceptance of this proposal is subject to the terms and conditions set forth on that HVAC services agreement entered into between the county of Livingston and William E. Walter, Inc., covering the period May 1st, 2023 to May 1st, 2028. No other terms and conditions oral or written shall be applicable to the services to be provided to be provided by William E. Walter, Inc., unless they are set forth in a written amendment to the HVAC services agreement and signed by the authorized representatives of both parties to set agreement.
Thank you. I understand some amendment proposed. First, Madam Clerk, do you have that document? So you have the wording.
I do have that language.
We're good there.
We're good there. Director Agustin, are you on the Zoom?
Yes, good evening.
Be able to listen to the attorney or and or read what the attorney has amended and proposed?
Yes, sir. That's just fine. I concur.
Thank you.
Commissioner Drake, can I ask where you would like that language inserted in the resolution?
Fair question.
I have the language. I don't know the location.
Just give me one second. I'm sorry.
May I propose it be a, be a further resolve?
I'll hold that in advance.
I'm sorry, but you have a, between the two further be it resolved would be fine. Right in between the two existing ones. Right.
Is that fair?
That, that's what I was proposing.
And that'll be the ruling of the chair. That'll be the second. It'll be a new second, therefore be it resolved.
Just, just be it further resolved is my proposal as opposed to.
After the current one that's there.
Correct.
Okay.
Would, would you like me to make a motion to amend?
Yes, please.
I move to amend the resolution to change the date from June twelfth, twenty twenty three to June twenty six, twenty twenty three. And to add after therefore be it resolved, be it further resolved, acceptance of this proposal is subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the HVAC services agreement entered into between the county of Livingston and William E. Walter, Inc., covering the period of May first, twenty twenty three to May first, twenty twenty eight. No other terms and conditions oral or written shall be applicable to the services to be provided by William E. Walter, Inc., unless they are set forth in a written amendment to the HVAC services agreement and signed by the authorized representatives of both parties to set agreement.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Fiani to amend. Second by Commissioner Helsner and support. Is there any discussion, questions, observations? Proceed, Commissioner Helsner.
So we're just saying that our agreement from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight is the primary agreement. And no further agreement is needed besides that. Is that, am I reading that right?
We're basically saying that this doesn't open a door to a new agreement. The terms and conditions remain the same. This is just an additional proposal for other things under the same terms and conditions.
Okay, so unless we go with the, you know, if we went to another company, this would not apply because we have an agreement with this company already. Is that? Is that my correct? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome. Madam Clerk, for the amendment amended, we can do a voice vote. We have to do a roll call for the other, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All those in favor of the amended amendment that's been proposed, both in writing and orally, kindly say aye. Eight to zero, that passes. Now we're on to the main amended resolution. Any questions, comment, discussion, analysis? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and go for, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, counsel. We're on to eleven dash N on the agenda. It's number two oh, excuse me, two oh two three dash oh six dash one one five. It's a resolution authorizing the Family Emergency Readiness Expo twenty twenty project and the distribution of American Rescue Act funding brought, brought to us by Board of Commissioners. First, is there a motion? Motion Deaton. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Fiani. Thank you for the second. It's been moved by Commissioner Deaton, seconded by Commissioner Fiani. This was talked about at FAM. Are there any questions, comments, analysis or otherwise discussion? Seeing none, I'll close discussion and we had, need a voice vote. Excuse me, we need a roll call.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross is absent. Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Epstein.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Run to agenda number twelve. It's entitled accounts payable reports. Sub A claims dated June twenty six, twenty twenty three. Sub B payables dated June sixth through June sixteen, twenty twenty three. Can I get a motion?
Motion Smith.
Thank you.
Second sample.
Thank you. It's both twelve A and B have been moved by Smith, supported by Commissioner Sample. Any discussion, any analysis, any question? Seeing none, voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye. Eight to zero, it passes. Item number thirteen, call to public. This is where the public gets to tell us things with a two minute time limit. And are there any cards that we need to handle first, Madam Clerk?
In just one moment. Lisa from Hamburg Township.
Lisa, please. Please have a seat. Begin when you're ready.
I just wanted to just comment on the passing of the Homeland Security resolution that with what's going on in Lansing right now with the hate speech bill that's coming up. I think it's going to be important for you guys to be vigilant on what people are calling domestic terrorists. Somebody speaking at a school board meeting and somebody doesn't agree. I mean, those kinds of terms have been thrown around already. So I just really want to make sure that we are protected. Our speech is protected and it looks like it's, it's being taken away. And I just want to make sure that, that we're protected in this county. Thank you.
Welcome. Anyone else in the room? Certainly, Chair.
Mr. Chair, part of, point of order. I, I think it would be best if we required the speakers to give their first and last name and their township as board rules. There was a lady that raised an issue last week. I just think it for uniformly, uniformity of application to.
Recollection and point of order is accepted. Lisa, what's your last name?
Rose Martovich.
Thank you.
I'm concerned with some of the people that speak and call to the public when they give their complete identification is that. Pardon me? And it does expose them to certain unwanted, unnecessary connections. We don't have any problem finding these people. They, they live in this community. I, I don't remember. I've never met anybody that called to the public. I didn't, that didn't belong here. And we're only, we're only opening up an opportunity for people to harass them and to threaten them. And I don't think that's either necessary or appropriate. That's why our cards have been changed to say, tell us what, what county or city or village doesn't, doesn't say what is your address or phone number or anything or your last name. So it's too bad that we have to take that precaution, but that's what's happening and would be, I think. I think we have to make sure that the people who've come to call to the public should, should be able to do so with the comfort knowing that, that they're not going to be subject to any of that sort of harassment.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a clarification. The card does request a first and last name for location of residence. It just asked for a city, township or village.
Council.
Thank you.
Counselor, Mr. Chair, point of order.
Have you been following this?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
If we're going to change it, I, I, we ought to change it in the rules. And I, I think that having deliberation on this issue, you know, I, I, I see the point of view that you know, to protect someone's privacy, but I also see the point of view of, you know, if you're going to come here and speak, we, we, the elected folks that represent the county have deserved to know who's speaking. But, you know, I, I haven't made up my mind, but I, I, I have made up my mind that if we're going to do this, we ought to do it the proper way, which would be to change our rules.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. And perhaps Commissioner the cards, the cards could exclude that. Well, I think, I think we have to find a way to make that happen. So we can introduce people by their first name and their location and retain the cards. We don't have to tell them what's on the card. And if, and if it's, if we feel like we have to know where they're from or if the board decides that we have to know their address, you know, then we can conceal that information ourselves. But I don't think we got to go that far. I don't think this is that big a deal to solve it.
Counselor, go ahead.
Just, just, just so we're clear, there's, it is legal to require that they give their names and addresses. It's not required to speak, not to attend a meeting, but to speak at a meeting. You can do that. It's your decision as a board. It's in your rules. If you want to change those rules, you can change those rules. But you would do that to the normal rulemaking process. You'd make an amendment to the rules. You'd vote on the change to the rules.
Sure. Commissioner Nakagiri, is that comfortable with you?
Yeah, I, I, I concur with counsel, you know, that we, if, if we, we ought not make a change to our established process by just fiat. Well, fiat's too strong, but just by one commissioner. I mean, it, it, the board operates best if we operate with the will of the majority. The, the rules were agreed to by the majority. We do have the ability to change them. The majority can change them and I, I just think we, we should follow our process. So.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Certainly.
In, in my mind, this is a public body. The reason why we ask people's names, first and last name, we cannot have people speak anonymously. If you speak with just your first name, you are really speaking anonymously. And when you speak in public, you have to be responsible for what you're saying. And I think that, that there's enough protection in our community that if there are people making threats because of what was said in a public meeting, it, it seems to me that it should be reported to the police. I, I kind of don't think that's legal to threaten somebody for what they said in public. I, I don't know. I, you know, it's just, this is a public body. There should be nothing happening in this body that's anonymous. You know, so first and last names, you know, where, where you live is a whole different thing. You live in, in a township or city or whatever, that's enough for us. But we need to know first and last names. I just, we can't do anonymous.
I'm assuming we're in the call of public and correct. We were following the rules from at this point, right?
Yes.
So that's.
No, that's fine, but I, there was, there, there was a discussion about it and, you know, I, I agree with you.
Yeah. I believe we solved the point of order that our rules say first name, last name and a choice of how to describe your residence as to city, township or village. And that's on the card. First name, last name, and then the nice choice. Those are our rules. So that's the point of order solved.
I have one more card in the room. John Conley from Green Oak Township.
Only two minutes. Please sit down. Make sure the mic's operating.
One, two. So John Conley, Green Oak Township, regarding the flags. Thank you for allowing me to pledge allegiance tonight. So for history, and so you have it for real. So in two thousand eleven, twelve, that era, Knights of Columbus discovered that Brighton area schools was missing over ninety flags in the high school. And they sponsored and installed those missing flags. Now Governor Snyder's order came in somewhere in that same era. And then shortly thereafter, I discovered within the schools, they weren't doing the pledge of allegiance. And in that, I asked administration why we weren't doing the pledge of allegiance. They said, we do it enough because it's sporting events. Now there were orders to the pledge of allegiance, have it offered every day in public schools. So I went and brought it to them and said, you know, there's law on this and how this is supposed to be done. So the following Monday, we had the pledge of allegiance ever thereafter. Now, it's very important to know this for historical fact because in some schools today, possibly in our county, there might even be flags in the classrooms. There's also supposed to be present in every classroom. And so for everybody here, we need to make sure that our flags are in the classrooms and the pledge of allegiance is offered to students every day in public schools. No one here said they have to do it. They can sit down. They can do whatever they want. But we all agreed as a state and our, and our leader in our state agreed that it would be offered. And I think it's very important. And it says in compliance with Governor Snyder's mandate that all students have the opportunity to say the pledge. And that's what we all stand for. I think we can unite under our flag and say, we should do that. So everybody check into your schools, find out if they're doing it. Make sure the flags are up in the classrooms. I think it's a minimal thing that we can do as elected officials. So thank you. And everybody have a good night.
Thanks, Jeff.
No further cards.
Thank you. We'll now go to Zoom. Does anybody have a hand on Zoom?
I do not have any on Zoom, Commissioner.
Thank you. So noted, we're finished with call to the public. We're now on item number fourteen adjournment. Is there a motion?
Support Nakagiri.
Moved by Helsner and support by his brother, Mr. Nakagiri. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight to zero, it's unanimous. We are adjourned.